Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 7 work session. I like to call the meeting to order as it's the appointed hour of seven o'clock. And thank you all for zooming. I just have to share that from our meeting on Tuesday. Trying to follow the the numbers that Jake and Gary put together. I found challenging and I'm thankful for the the work that they did with Janian to get all the information to us. Last night and then I think an updated version this afternoon. But look forward to to going through the numbers and we'll look forward to exercising great minds. I'd like to give a meeting for the bit quote from Admiral Hyman Rickover. Father of America's Nuclear Navy. Great minds discuss ideas. Average minds discuss events and small minds discuss people. And I'm grateful for your great mind is to be embracing the idea of balance budget and working through. But that. Over to him to. Advance the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We had, as you said, a few very minor changes. And Gary, would you like to go over those changes very quickly, just so council understands the very few small changes made since Tuesday?
I can do that, Jim. Only change that I'm aware of Tuesday when we looked at the numbers for the indoor pool. Those numbers reflected full funding of $15,000. Coming out that meeting having the impression that they were only expecting 90% funding. Latest iteration has funding of $13,500. I believe that's the only change that I'm aware of. Subsequent to Tuesday's meeting.
Weren't there a couple of formula errors too that you and Jake had to change?
I'm going to defer to Jake. He is the one that circulated all the numbers on PC as well as the numbers. That we're looking at, so I'll defer to him.
The only other change, $282,000 carryover. Us out of an overall deficit in the general fund. Latest update this morning was just to correct a percentage general fund summary page, but it was nothing. Just wanted to be sure council understood there if you make those changes, they were minor and not consequential to the. Yes, now, you know, Jake, Gary and myself are here to spend. I know that this format virtually to a certain extent. And I also understand that having the electronically in front of us is sometimes a struggle because we're used to holding something in our hands. It's spreading it out in front of us, so. That represents the best we could do to try and the city and put our priorities where they belong to the residents of our community. Resources we'd like at this time, we think we put together a fairly picture of the resources, the funding that will have this coming. It could get worse, not could get better as well. So what I think we have tonight or later in the evening is the best we can put together at this juncture. And it's going to be something that will obviously have to perhaps be adapted as the conditions because of COVID-19 continue to change. And or the economic conditions as a result of COVID-19 may change. So again, I think questions from you are probably in order at this time, whatever you have for the next 50 minutes or 55 minutes.
Or or five before start taking questions. Just want to make perhaps two observations. One, there was a question of. Why do we need to approve this before May 15? And Jared was good enough to provide the statute that says that. Will provide. Will adopt our budget no later than May 15th or 30 days from the last communication of regarding state funds. And in conversation with Jared, May 1st, we learned about CARES Act money that's coming to the state, which obviously modified their budget. So arguably, we have the latitude. If if we want. To extend from May 30, May 1st to May 31st. And I see Rebecca wants to make a statement on that and I'll yield in just a second. We can still move forward tonight if everyone's comfortable, but we do have some latitude there. And we'll hash that out as we get to the end of this meeting. The other opinion, when we were talking, Dennis was catering for the agency funding and not to remove that. And referenced letters from the city going out or someone referenced letters from the city going out that they're going to be reduced 10%. Personally, I feel if we've sent a letter out saying we're going to cut you 10% that we should honor that. And find the money, whether it's fund balance or tweaking revenues or whatever. To fulfill what we've put in writing to people. I also would charge council with considering directing the city manager over the course of the next year as we look at the budget for 2022. To go out and meet with these agencies and see what they're they're feeling. Or not their feeling, what it would take to get to eliminate their funding. When we look at why we're funding some of these. What I can recall with Yellow Brick Road was when we had a childcare crisis and Yellow Brick Road was the only deal in town. Providing infant care for residents in our community. My recollection is that we funded about $10,000 to help Yellow Brick Road provide that service for that year. And we've inched it back over the past 15 years to where it's $1,000 specific to scholarships for residents of the city of Lexington. I don't think they're reliant on our contribution and us not contributing to their annual fund or their operations. Is not an indictment of the great work that they provide. It's not a government function, as it were. So something I would encourage council to think about directing the city manager to go and sorry to pick on Yellow Brick Road. Another example is the Rockbridge Area Occupational Center, which we funded pretty substantially a couple of years as they were in financial strife. Because of the great work that they did and the folks that they employed at that organization. Because of the workload and some other regulatory issues, they ended up disbanding. And they're no longer on our list. And so I encourage council to think about that. Rebecca, please chime in on your perspective on the May 15. Looks like you may be muted. There you go.
Are you all able to hear me?
Yes. Loud and clear. Welcome Rebecca. Well, I did hear you.
You can hear me?
I can. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I did want to take a moment and just respond. I was able to read this last email correspondence between Jim and Mayor Friedman and Mr. Jenkins. And while I'm certainly not an attorney by any means, I think there's some misinterpretation on that of the release of our estimate of state funds and the funding. When I'm looking at this, this federal CARES Act is federal funding. Time, federal paid amount is basically like a stimulus that is not in our budget. It's not reflected in our budget, included in our budget. It is intended to be used incurred expenses or support of expenses that need rest, educational needs or continued technology. Able to respond to the COVID-19 effects on our school system. That I would consider, actually, I would not consider the CARES Act for state superintendent on May 1st as an estimate of. If anything, beyond that deadline, according to our code. You might be able to April 22nd amended budget by the government, the state funds. So if you're considering an A 15 Code of Virginia expectation to go out beyond that in order for us to be in compliance with what's expected. Could be May 22nd, which would be that last governor's amended state funding. CARES Act funding is not state funding. That is a one-time payment based on.
Fair enough. We'd be, but certainly as long as we, if we pushed it to 20.
Looking at that, about that 30-day question that you had there, 30 days to approve beyond that estimate of state route. I think you would only be able to look at that April 22nd, Governor.
Fair enough, fair enough. Well. Thank you. Yeah, we're in uncharted territories with many of the things we're dealing with. And hope that we can come to a conclusion or consensus and approval tonight. But wanted to alert council that depending upon how our discussion goes, we have that latitude.
Absolutely, and I apologize for for being last minute asking to speak on that, but I just wanted to clarify that from at least our interpretation on this end. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Certainly glad to have you anytime and you can call me Frank anytime as well, but thank you.
Thank you.
With that backdrop and information, the members of council, what questions do you have regarding the numbers or tweaks or changes that you might want to solicit your friends or colleagues to support?
Not not really a change, just a question. So on one of the things we've eliminated was a contingency amount of 35,000. So just there is no contingencies built into the budget, basically, just so we're all clear on that.
That is correct. We don't have any leniency at all, whatever is in that budget or in this budget, line by line is what we have no more.
And I guess getting back to Frank's comment, so was there, I remember being all the agencies notified that we, we hadn't passed. But what was the notification made to the agencies, I guess?
I basically sent to all the agencies a letter that said, you requested funds in the amount of in FY21. Social funding, Y21 budget. That certain seems certain in the future on recommending regulatory agencies of 10%. The city council will consider the several weeks.
Mending.
Right, just recommending at that time.
Respond to my recommendation that we should fund or find a way to fund the agencies this year.
Obviously, from last meeting, I struggle with that question. I don't like this overall process. Gary sent a memo options. If there's time, I'd like to talk about that because, but um, you know, you hate to cut the agencies when when in some ways they're needed most, but. I, we need to prepare everyone for the worst and monitor and we can make changes as we go. I have not received any feedback for it's only been two days since we made that announcement that people need.
Yeah. My my forward is if we hadn't set a, and if a letter had not been sent shaping expectations for nine. I would be more comfortable saying, sorry, we just can't handle it. We, I feel like we've made somewhat of a commitment with the city managers. And I feel very confident that I feel responsible to give notice throughout saying. We want to focus on tax functions of the city government. Now indictment on any of the organizations and what the the good things that they do that addresses some of the concerns that Gary rep memo that you reference.
Yeah, well, when I went by the chance dollars, which I imagine from their budget, housing development would be cut $1,000, which again, I think that's pretty substantial. Project Horizon, Yellow Brick Road sees, but they are less than $2,000, most of them around $1,000 for them. I don't think it would matter. But those bigger ones I worry about.
Right. How do you feel about the idea of funding this year at the 90% and directing the city manager to, if you will, negotiate or discuss an exit?
I could work with that. I'd be interested in what everybody else has to say.
Well, on Tuesday, I made a suggestion for the city manager to approach the agencies and see how flexible or or maybe needy they are for the funding that. That we've already set aside and what they can live with, what they can live without. I think there's, there's an opportunity to help the agencies that that really do need the help and give. The city that the opportunity to cut some funding from our budget that that could be possibly cut based on the feedback from the agencies that were discussed.
I appreciate your optimism, but I haven't found too many organizations to say, we really don't need your money.
Well, I haven't heard any feedback at all from any conversations that our city managers had with the agencies that we're talking about.
Certainly.
Well, I don't want to add any more workload to Jim's load as far as that's my one concern with that suggestion unless we just pick the big ones.
Well, what I have to.
What's the criteria we're using based on on that?
I'll let Jim talk. He was gonna say something.
I'll just reference that because of the timing that we're looking at with potential adoption tonight. It doesn't give the city manager much time to solicit feedback from these folks. And that's why I suggest the idea of doing the 90% funding that's somewhat been. Acknowledged and working towards in the coming year with what you're talking about, Chuck. It gives a little bit more time to grease the skids and get accomplished, is it in the next either two weeks? Make a statement.
I was just going to note, I didn't know the agencies by any means. I did check what the could do without it. You know, it's a few thousand dollar agencies. Now, I did not speak with Cat. Somebody mentioned it's there's $8,000. That's my dealt with cats. Agencies, you know, probably it makes more of a difference, but I didn't take the opportunity over the last day and a half to do that.
Hear that that, you know, you took the initial we're talking about and getting some feedback, so it's helpful. There is a possibility there.
Want to weigh in?
For the sake, if they're listening in, because I'm associated with one, actually more as agencies at this time.
I is Block area health center. Feedback on.
We're the city council and we have to make the hard. I'm not for that that Jim that sent it was a month ago boxed up me into making a debate for the citizens of Lexington and the budget staff. So I, I also said staff would receive raises that we would fund some capital improvement. We'd have a downtown enhancement fund contingency. To say, I mean, I'm not going to make all are connected. I mean, I know some have to recuse themselves, but we all are associated in folks that that are involved with these. I just have a hard time that Jim sent a letter when the magnitude of COVID-19, if you remember the initial. Looking a lot better, so there was a lot in the previous budget. So hey, if there's more money, if you're going to tell Jim to find money to find money for council contingency or for the, let's put the one to. As long as the word staff furlough for the second half of FY21, I have a hard time committing to things that are not taking care of the core functions of city government. Thank you, David. Dennis, I don't want to not give you an opportunity to weigh in.
Well, a couple of things. You know, I do have a sister who is employed by the indoor pool, although because of the joint's agreement with Rockridge County creating that indoor pool. They're not technically included in the discretionary agencies, but I mean, I'll mention them. I, I'm, I agree with, I think that we probably this year should. Or even though you're right, it's not a firm or legal commitment. This is the year to be as supportive as we can to these outside, totally on board, though, with with, you know, Frank's recommendation, Gary suggested as to next year, maybe. Been coming up with a pot and then, but I feel as though we, this is the year to be supportive of our outside agent. Doing governmental work on some level, poor, they're helping the, I mean, approach here and fund these outs a better way to do it next year.
Again, not wanting to be tired. I can't believe I'm taking this. This will be my, I don't know, we've said, we've funded the, next year will be different. And $2 million hole in the bud three. For all we know, it could be, I'm reluctant to committing to things. Street have even opened before the universities have even one parents weekend or one home football game committing to need to that we could. Wait till when we already know we're going to have to look at this budget. And and so I, with outside agencies after the first court. That's I'd be.
And I think the only, I really looking at these, I think the only could be hurt are rats. Authority, just because the the number soon, we could wait till October to. Came back and said they were in dire straits, but.
I was going to suggest to city council that if you were to put some type of language in the budget that would, she's funding shall be renewed or reviewed. And depending on the revenues and the, there's an opportunity that the agencies could be fun to be comfortable with because nobody wants to say no. But with the unknown being what it is, look again and maybe the assurance that they could have come to a council meeting and say. Here is our status today will allow a very balanced view of not only how much worse it's gotten potentially or better in the economy, but also how the economy's impacted them. There might be another round of federal funding for them.
I like that. I like Jim's approach. I mean, there's a lot of things that I think we would like to see done with the budget, the latter half of FY21. If our businesses are are open and our restaurants are filled. You know, it's continues to be in the back of my mind, staff compensation. With with, and and it's in the back of my mind that what we've done to our equipment fund and our, you know, capital improvement. That that those again are obligations can down the road by by drastic this year in this budget. But don't think we have agencies. Jim, I'll let you think about it while we hopefully address some other talk about restoring the funding if projections we projected. Or as bad as it could be, full circumstance in October. Actually, that's a tough time for some of the numbers and one month lag December that we really are looking at the one. I think we just need to be aware that we don't change what's. Before we close and just get a chance to stew on it because my my, if you, if we do want to restore funding. Anything bring it back on board because things are better than we anticipate. What does it have to look like? Where does it need to be for us to be comfortable restoring or. Providing funding for for some of those. I trust Jim and staff's been thinking about that and you can share that with us before we conclude. To stray a little bit from agencies for a minute, are there any other topics, concerns, changes, modifications? Or just point points of members want to raise?
Just had a question. And this is just whether it's, if you're going to restore the fund to back to 90% or what would you cut then? I mean, are we just going to leave deficit or just no one ever mentioned cut if you were going to either restore residency funding? I mean, it's just.
Respond or I'm not sure.
Well, from my perspective, if we're looking at restoring the site agencies and the cost was cutting other, I would have to recommend against that. I think we've reviewed their services and activities are offered by the city, not as high a priority. Once we've put up, we've added some optional ones in case things can personally want to recommend to city council currently not being funded. Would be traded out, recommending for funding would then be taken out. I just don't see that kind of room or that being. For the city and our, in our community at this point, was any consideration at all of that name? If things didn't get worse. What I balance. I'd like to think we may next four to six months to see how bad it might to fund our necessary act. Make a commitment to anything that wasn't, if you will, nest until we see if it gets worse. Some of the funding by using the fund balance to the economic decline, slight uptick and it's safe.
Michelle, if I understood your question regarding 90% as I recommended or asked. It would be either from adjust or fund balance, I think are the only two options.
Just what I wanted to understand what we're a session two days ago. So I guess my question was for any, where's it coming from? So if you want it's unbalanced, that's fine or make it up in the revenue somehow.
As David pointed out previously is so you could increase taxes 1%, one not 1% but 1 cent. Fund balance revenues, those are your three options, I think, that to cover that expense. And just to clarify, I pointed that out. I didn't advocate it. But but again, that are in budget scenario, one all swallowed begrudgingly. You know, if you recalcitrantly for the SRO position. That, you know, let's say the pool, you know, the the community might, you know, there's a lot. And so I, I think Jim has a good approach here and that he's done it to do in a time where none of us know. And heck, I think one of the first questions contingency. And I feel like two ago and we said, ah, we got to have a council. Again, in my five or six years on council, there's expenses that we need that for. And funds that we're moving things around be a good place to park money if we, which I don't feel that we do, but I'm just throwing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may weigh in, idea of tax increase, even though that is simple fix. Council cannot adopt the budget tonight and real estate tax increase because we have no tax increase. If we were tax increase, it would necessitate advertisement and public hearing on such a tax increase.
Thank you. Items, concerns, questions, curious? You know, I think noting, I mentioned it at the at the work session, those that that recycling is going away to be a location for residents that want a plastic or paper. That they can take it and so inclined to do that. I don't think they're able to do that, that. The the schools are compensation, there's no step increase schools. Compensation wise, this position in the police department vacant for a year, we're fortunate with Mark Riley. But but that's at some point that 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 can impact a city. And there's a lot of decisions that we're making that I just feel like. People are going to realize in about a month what we've done and and I just, you know, want to have it be out in the open. There's a lot in this budget and I meant to say, Dennis, I think initially the good work that tourism and the board and. There's a lot in this budget and I meant to say, Dennis, I think initially the good work that tourism and the board and the brainstorming of the executive director and so forth to, I hate to say it, but they got the ball rolling with their creative and generous offer proposal to reduce the locality's contribution for a, for a number of quarters. Because that plugged the, you know, all of the localities whole initially, I mean, that started the ball rolling. And, you know, my short time on tourism, when, when things get rough, you don't cut tourism, you double down to promote the, the region. And when the Shenandoah Valley is back open, we're going to want tourism doing their thing and bringing people in when it's safe. And, you know, that, that's something that, that we are in this budget, reducing our contribution to tourism. So there's a lot of organizations that are pitching in to make this budget happen. And I just, I appreciate that and I appreciate the staff, what they've done and I appreciate our city employees that are gonna, you know, go a year without compensation increases also and, and serving the public. So I'll get off my soapbox.
I'll pile on, you lit the fire and they're $53,000. So everyone making promises to fill the hole that we don't know how large it's going to be and discussed before. Hope and pray that we're incredibly wrong and the virus has stopped and back to living and having fun.
Your spot on, I uplifted Chief Dickerson at the work session on Tuesday. Those folks are answering every 911 call safe and they answer a lot of calls that where they, they're everywhere and they, they go. And then some, you know, a lot of the time. So you're exactly right. Thanks for.
My sense is there's no, to the budget, does anyone, all who wants to make a recommendation. We're not voting on anything, but if there are any changes, this is the time to, to discuss it and solicit support. Expectation would be is if we don't have any meaningful, I also want to know your thoughts on or delaying it to the 21st. And because there are so many significant changes taking place and most of them were rolled out on Tuesday, the 5th, which did not make the Wednesday, the sixth news gazette, nor the, the timing to be in the Rockbridge advocate. This would give an opportunity at least for it to be and perhaps be disseminated and so that people could have an opportunity to respond.
Point I'd like to know from Jake and Gary, does that present any kind of problem if wait two weeks to approve the budget?
Other than the school issue, which was for going ahead with a reason why we couldn't wait until the 21st.
Only observation I would make that really puts pressure on first. If you can, you've got no backup plan. She could always approve only the school budget, but I don't see how we could expect to adopt a school budget here to adopt an overall budget.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with adopting it tonight, except that it, you know, so rapidly. If there's not a, in some ways, I don't.
I'm confident that, that we will be okay. It takes a little bit of time, you know, and, and reason that, you know, a couple of minutes budget that, that are not in this budget. As a neighbors may not know that and I wouldn't, in this time, their concerns or ask their questions prior to it in our community in the interest of transparency. Mayor Friedman, that, that the two we share what's in this budget. And I for one can explain, you know, explain my position, but doing it a little bit more difficult. So I would be, it's not, if it's legal and if it doesn't, Gary and Jim and Jake, I feel like we, we had it scheduled to adopt on a certain night and last year, and I don't think there was a harm when we did that.
Times and unique solutions prevail. So welcome other council members' offices. And I certainly respect Gary's option to a corner needing to adopt the CIP, the, the general budget.
I would be okay with waiting as this is a little more noticed if we do choose, you know, not to fund those this year, an opportunity to absorb that news rather than.
Been target for a long time now and things still could, we need to definitely be ready by the 21st. But we're that confident to do that tonight. So the 21st, more self-assured that this is the route we've got.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm very comfortable adopting in two weeks. I have no problems with that. Strongly consider that you have an opportunity in the fall. It's not saying that whatever we're ultimately adopted on the 21st cannot, as we all do know, that there's a lot of uncertainty. Now, I, I plan on and prepare, we'll prepare. If there's any opportunity to restore any of these things, needs to know, the community needs to know that we have the funding there. Gets worse, then we all need to know, we have to work harder. Back and I just wouldn't hesitate to have you think on the 21st and leaving something out means it's irreparably gone. That's the only thing. I think we have the opportunity, Jim, put it back in and some things can work well going back in then in some. But many things, you know, many things can be redeemed.
Thank you, Jim. Council members, have any other topic, few minutes we have left? Hearing none, we'll, we'll hope that mothers on, good folks, a good old USA prosperous future. Hearing nothing else, last have us adjourned, eight, thank you, Janie, and stand adjourned until in 12 minutes.
Orderment's Texas for Prepared Food, May 31st, 2020.
Chuck with the second, thank you very much.
Um. Let me get the. April and late taxes are due and not, when food and lodging taxes due, is it on the 20th, state sales tax?
Yeah, I, to date, it must be somewhere in the range of the 20th through the 25th. I normally see most all of the taxes for food and lodging paid by the 25th, but I don't know precisely what the due pay is. I wish we had the commissioner revenue here to answer that question for us. It must be in that approximate time range.
So is this ordinance saying that? I guess it's not specifying.
Chuck, I would offer up that the idea is that all the businesses will still need to file their taxes. They don't really have to pay them at that time. And if they don't, they will not be charged a penalty or interest. And then exact date, and we can confirm with beginning in June, the.
Okay, I'm, I'm understanding, I'm not sure if we need, late taxes are.
Is that a question for Jared?
Of the month, ideally, everyone's been paying them, but that would be the idea is that any of them, any of the three months hasn't been an interest on that amount, whatever, as of June 20th.
Accessible as provided, yada, yada, one through May 31st. It's, it's. The collecting.
Look at section three, as I read.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's the appointed Doc, welcome to the Lexington City Council. I'm of emergency and the pledge of allegiance. So if you all will flag.
To the flag.
Of the United, for which it stands, one nation, justice for all.
Next item hearings, the first is top three known as to waive penalties. I would like. I'm not aware of anyone that submit. The public hearing creation.
Ordinance taxes for prepared food, May 31st, 2020.
Chuck with the second, thank you very much.
Um. Uh, let me get the. April and late taxes are due and not. Wouldn't food and lodging taxes do, is it on the 20th state sales tax?
Yeah, I today it must be somewhere in the range of the 20th through the 25th. I normally. See most all of the taxes for food and lodging paid by the 25th. But I don't know precisely what the due pay is. I wish we had the commissioner revenue here. To answer that question for us. It must be in that approximate time range.
So is this ordinance saying that? I guess it's not specifying.
Chuck, I would offer up that the idea is that all the businesses will still need to file their taxes. They don't really have to pay them at that time. And if they don't, they will not be charged a penalty or interest. And then exact date and we can confirm with beginning in June, the.
Okay, I'm understanding. I'm not sure if we need. Late taxes are.
Is that a question for Jared?
For the month, ideally everyone's been paying them. But that would be the idea is that any of them, any of the three months hasn't been an interest on that amount, whatever as of June 20th.
Accessible as provided, yada, yada, one through May 31st. It's. The collecting.
Look at section three, as I read, all such taxes are due and payable as owed. Penalties and interest accrue starting on June 1st, not pay March, April, or May, but after June 1st, those taxes are.
Worth noting, since this idea was originally at that time, I think it was explained to us. These taxes are not paid by the business, customers pay the taxes. And it's the taxes that the customers pay to the city. So they they're into a holding account, I gather, of the business to hold the taxes to the city. So just for those following. That was some by our commissioner, the revenue and our city manager, that was shared with us.
And and a no interest loan will be presumably designated. I that. The the follow up question to that is by the end of May 31st, business that has outstanding. Who is ultimately the unpaid taxes? All the corporations held liable?
Evolution. Pursuing.
On this, it's I know other locales or downtown, which has the state has in sales tax reporting and pay. I'm just trying to provide for myself and to those listening and watching in in fact, what we're really doing.
Because again, not to belabor it, but held in trust. And that this business cannot legally lose funds other than hold on to. And again, that's coming from our.
Is it's not been doing much or any business, eh? That there would not be my.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Second, are there, is there any further discussion? Become a creditor and are not remitted to the city because the line and we're creditor, is that correct?
Yeah, I suppose it depends on the worst case of amount and the, but that, yes, those are the two. And try to claw back something and save and not pursue. But again, that would only be part of, that's not something during not collecting these taxes.
If I may know best of times who go out of business and they don't, and we're left in a similar circumstance. Ordinance before you, as I understand, was to port for businesses who were just like a beat of. A few short weeks, the best managed businesses in those situations have to adjust. Just assuming they're going to pay those taxes and they're segregated away somewhere and take a look around. If we lose one or two, I mean.
Going back to the beginning of the cover, item number three, penalties and interest on any first. So if they don't want these are interest to accrue. An interest need to be paid by June 1st.
Well, I think you bring it up, it may make sense to amend that on any unpaid taxes will begin to accrue start.
I think I think that no one gets surprised. That's only. To making sure. What of this ordinance is is doing. I don't know whoever made the motion.
I accept your amendment to change, accept your amendment to change the approve the ordinance.
Please. I believe by the relevant sections of the Lexington code is not due until June 21st on that portion of the tax.
For the May, May 31st, we obviously have to account for March and.
Correct, if you wanted the whole month of May included without tax, the. June 21st.
Yeah, I think that the second sentence is due and payable and the expectation. Then the penalties and interest on any, I think that's the way to go is is to keep that amendment is, I think that will achieve what we are attempting.
So a motion and a second amendment. Do we need to vote on him?
So it would just be a vote on the one motion.
Vince.
Hi.
Mr.
Hi.
Matt. It's Alexander.
Hi.
Next item on the agenda, the 20 dash zero four, an inspection of rental, do we receive. Communicate and. For these into the record. So if you will, in for what effectively eliminates this ordinance was eliminated. Even if in a reduced manner is it has not enabling legislation. Especially COVID-19 economic downturn, implement such a program in the near future. Council and city manager, keep the city high on your list of programs. Let me provide a little bit of history as to the initiation of this program. In the late 1980s, the city created the threshold housing commission. And obtained numerous community development block grants for the purpose of rehabilitating. Much of the substandard owner occupied housing stock within the government of planning and community development. Under the national staff were hired, one to handle the app program. And one to perform the work and inspect the work performed. Over over 100 houses in the Green Hill, the city. In addition, the city partnered with and add, I'm sorry, of other low income houses. This program formed those areas of the city. With this program to improve the condition of the rental properties. We had received many inquiries and complaints about authority to do much about them through inspection ordinance. One of the staff from the need to perform this function, albeit the first we had hoped and was far more complex. There were many very positive outcomes for the inspection reports and actually walking through honorable. I will not take a position as times it was the tenants who created these conditions. And sometimes it was the landlords or management companies which allowed them to exist. I can however, say that there was a significant need for such a program in Lexington. I've been out of the picture for many years now and cannot say if these problems still exist or how many substandard units there might be. I seriously doubt that the city has any idea either, since the program has been dormant for many years now. This program was the logical continuation of the city's commitment to housing in our community. And had widespread support from the council and threshold. It is disappointing to see that this commitment has waned over the years. The city, city still has an extremely large number of rental properties with most being for individuals with lesser incomes. Just as soon as your finances stabilize, I would encourage you to re adopt this program. And recommit the city to ensuring adequate living conditions for our citizens who rent. Thank you. The next item is from Ben Grigsby. And I don't have his address, but I know it's Lee Avenue. Good afternoon, post reading the news gazette notice regarding the possible repealing of the city's ordinance regarding rental property inspections. And a brief call with Arnie Glazer yesterday afternoon, I'd like to share a few thoughts for for city councils consideration. These comments are based on two different perspectives, experience for student renter and also as an owner. They also incorporate budgetary reaction program has been more of a landlord in its active period. I found partnership to ensure minimum safety standards in rental housing against all material aspects of say fire hazards risk. The program was a good checkpoint for framework of a CO and a new construction experience. Budgets and structure aside, I feel that are both tenants and property owners. As the to go, have the dubious pleasure of visiting a diverse, while there were properties that were quite well maintained. Your especially egress there are the rental inspection program to identify and encourage remedy of these deficiencies risk of harm. All this said, in recent time, program has been and is likely to remain a seconding it in a half baked way inefficient and competitive in my view. Therefore, any read FTE to be effective is of the city's building inspection function. Also to consider in respect to maintaining the ordinance, does the city increase its liability by having more than eliminating a program only for there to be. Bottom line, given the repeal and possible later, program would require exhaustive public hearing and public suspension. Of what was safety positive ordinance for the city are insurers. As a citizen, you be a good regulation instated once budgets so allow of property owners and management companies. Questions respectfully, B C received from Lynn Alexander, the news gazette of the items of this ordinance. 2020, the city would consider ending the registration and incorrectly, and this is not the issue under the. And the idea that there is no accountability for the unit to fall apart due to the owner not wanting upkeep. On the other side, I've seen renters who, and thus it again falls apart and becomes unsound ability is present for either party. Everyone loses and the larger community. I request that it could the codes to remain, thanks again, Lynn Alexander. Comments I will close and ask for.
Thousand twenty dash zero four and ordinance duration and inspection of rental dwelling, the inspection of rental dwelling units.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion?
The in planning commission when we were discussing the compromise, we did note that we don't have the, at the program, the comp plan. I don't know if you want to correct that, Arnie. And I think that's the right. To remind us that we to that program.
Earlier today, I had as the city of Lexington will no longer inspect. And on the surface, that gave me a great deal of heart consult of when. If you the opportunity on the books in the city of Lexington, there's a renter who's concerned about precarious situation. Whether we're inspect, they do deserve the right to have. And the process that we're looking to go to, we go out and inspect, we do investigate complaints going forward, which I. First given. The fact that we don't. Received public comment on this, also dealing with the budget and we haven't had much folks are affected by renting. It is both a renter or a landlord though that a that a renter that substandard, a substandard environment resource recourse of contacting. There there's certain avenues that they can, and so. I stomach this, there's still opportunity if someone feels that they have one.
Going to be complaint driven, you have are fearful of making a complaint because of. And there are some horrible things that to retaliate with with. I mean, I see some people who come in to apply for their living conditions where they. And there are still issues and rather just go find someplace else to go. One of the things that. The city things, you know, when they do, that's a possibility of leaks or whatever and. Or is water bills cold or two people and you know, something is wrong on public works to take. Up with other departments within the whole household. Making this something that strictly have many people complain, they would live best to get out.
I. I think the citizen thread were. Were good comments makes me really concerned. I just doesn't. Marilyn had just made, I understand this budget issuing it back will be harder. I don't know, I just, so. Our properties in some neighborhoods be in place, even though we're taking it out and then it just, it might get back to where it's at. And then we have to put it back in. I just, so that's just my opinion.
Location behind it.
Yeah, and in play effectively in place turned to me because, you know, it clears things. That's, that's a problem. The worst case is if something turns out that the city was supposed to be inspecting. This problem occurred and they haven't been doing it's an affirmative liability to the city. And program as required under our own version. To hide all the concerns, but we either need to how it's written or not have it.
Jared, can I ask, Mr. David on the books, is there any mechanism to do that? Basically amend it so that so the moratorium on it and we won't, it won't January of 2022 or 2023 on the books. And if we did oppose to completely removing it to put it back in.
It's pending.
I, I think the perspective, I don't see a huge hurdle side. It's more the practical side, one ramping up the, so that would be putting it back on the books. And a moratorium is just.
Well, if you're saying to to bring it back, you know, brand, I kind of liked Leslie's idea of in the plan. So that, you know, we we go, I mean, clearly we can't do this right now.
Yes, I certainly not forget that this is a, but. So it's clear this program when we're not is to bring it back. All we need to do ordinance is to advertise.
And I think being in the complex it more visible.
I would. I understand the, you know, of leaving in the comp plan, but pick up the comp plan and read through thing that's. Obstantive, the, the, the challenge, you know, that we have perception in reality, if we. Inspecting dwelling. Conflicting signal of here versus somehow, and it suggests I would, I would feel more. And then trying to to vote on this.
Been doing this for four, at least four years.
That I understand that I've been part of conversation, getting the program back up and running for the very. I'm, I'm worried about the message legalese and all that. I understand, I get it. Pulling the plug on this is gonna be.
But I mean, I do think important constituents that we haven't been doing this, that we get would be better to to. Pulling it. So I would.
I just want to say we had years ago, three years ago, and we didn't, I understand now. You know, past, we have to, or either we're committed to. Um, I said, but. Put just didn't really.
When they did some restructuring and replaced with the fire marshal inspections. And that included some rental inspection fizzled out. I don't know why. Is represent that we are in support of minimum at least. And it, the program. Really downtown because of the connective on the second floor. It was apartment, there were landlords that people in a bedroom or they had them in else to to sleep in. And the room didn't case of a fire, those kinds of things were hazards. And I don't know this, but then we have not only the day that is full of rent, many more so than others. And longer you let something go with things that they should not this current budget situation. I don't know how to keep this on the books. I think it, like some others have said, that have something ready to start. It's place. If we had a date that we work session on such and such date to stop establishing a new program. Then that too will send a better messaging about it and it let it sit in the comp plan for.
I think one of the problems we had in the past with all the people to the property that needed. Between the the turnover in the city manager's office and connect all the dots that needed to get connected to make this. There were just other fires that that had to get language. But that, if I recall correctly, and I don't know how, now that we have a new city manager in the office, some things need to be stabilized. That needs that. Regardless, you know, maybe it'll, the, the parties that to re examine what needs to happen. Possibility or over the next two weeks to do this at this time. And opportunity to discuss the ordinance.
You are the part in putting the resources toward resources.
I would. I'm not going to weigh in on if I can bring a little historic for city nearly eight years, first year. And I'll for I remembered discussions, city count asking that the rental inspection. Overlapped, Joe Neal, who was the individual who was supposed to be doing the fact that she. Quite cleared any rental inspections for quite. It was at Camille and insistence when Noah came on to get the. Program reinst earlier alluded to, it was a effort between Trent Roberts, the fire deep pockets building inspector. To Ellie, I believe her planning department, her role. And try to get all the players excited at the right time. So that this program's been dormant for three or that it's been much longer than that. So I just want. The historic, thank you.
People who don't have heat in the winter and they have raw sewage coming out of people who, when it rains, it dies. And I do know homes that are owned by, this is rental inspection. Turned that if homeowners are having to resort to their rental properties in the area that. I mean, I am very aware of two now.
Can I ask you, you said some revenue for investigation, the habitability of a tenant making that. An issue, the social worker, does it have to be testing the investigation?
Marshall go out or or a neighbor would go to the fire mar.
The reason why I was asking is if there are tenants who. The reason why I was asking is if there are tenants who are afraid for the avenue for the filing of. So.
And invisible, so I guess I'm concerned about our safety issue. So again, I think that's a.
I don't think anybody has a concern, has a question. Properties out there that are not in great, the fact the matter Brenda is the one who brought this for Jim to address. Looks that we are making people register and we are regular basis and we're not doing it. Find the money to put it in place. That's great. Could be modified to include, but also to put it at some point revisit. I shouldn't have any desire to do that, but discussion make that including something like that in the April of twenty.
Now have two motions agenda. If Mr. Bring it up is when we were discussing the budget, I'd be here's what it'll cost to put a program in place. Or our residents, any impact this nature, if we don't have the staff. To put it in place, the supply only in our budget. It's, it's, it's not can recover or until if this is good to us because we're protecting the property values of the entire community rationale perhaps. We have to have the funding. It's a budget issue.
Policy issue that's driven by. Any other disapproval of. Jim. Miss Hens.
And to repeal the.
Ordinance as presented.
Are we going to have another motion for.
Jim's suggestion of wait could be a separate motion.
I do have concerns about the where if we're not doing it, I guess I'll say I, and I hope we have another.
Mr. Ziegler. Ms. Drawn.
I.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Andrew.
Yeah.
Am I mad?
Program immediately, just six years on council, I've never heard cycles actually cycle. I've, I've, I've never heard, heard it up to tonight when we were incredibly healthy to have this conversation. We got three comments that brought a lot have been and where we maybe will go. Also, we had no choice but to vote if our attorney is saying we need to get it off the books, except to expose all of the city to.
David, I would also note, you know, as a home improvement. Third places, there's no doubt in my mind that action program robust end of the city with real estate taxes. Got a million dollar surpluses and we've not chosen or moved advanced on it. But the action, a winning lottery ticket that someone can can put it on, give our, bring it back and fully fund it. Next item on the agenda Walters with Rockbridge County School at six hundred Waddell Street hearing. And I will close the public hearing.
The request from Randy Walters with the Rockbridge County for the Maury River Middle School Campus at six.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for a second discussion.
Just to clarify, construct the brewmaker annex build with neighbors. And I, and I called and I had a chance to talk to questions. He answered them all and, you know, something that is, you know, the. The rated the brewmaker, of course, there's rock up in that area, but and so I makes great use and the community will benefit from it. So I.
Younger kids, and that's basically what it'll, they have put a fence around. It is adjacent to neighbors years ago when people would park in the neighborhood that's are included as you can see, but turns about dust. And we discussed Russ Orson, and he would just work with the neighbors on that.
Field, is it?
I'm part time employee of.
I don't think so. Don't have any sort of.
Similar problems have come up when city schools are trying to do so.
Obviously, if you, you're certainly more than welcome to do that.
Strictly accusing myself from the playground, playground discussion, but just for a little background.
Very good. Thank you, Jared. Hearing none would ask for. Hi, Mr. Smith.
I.
Miss Hens.
I.
Alexander.
I.
Thank you all very much. busy as has approval of minutes seven point one including your package and you had the opportunity to observations or Leslie.
Just an observation, everything was good and we very good, but.
There's no objection presented. Citizens remarks that firm, we have no citizen remarks.
We do not have any that came in. The only things that came in were the.
Terrific. Thank you. And communications, Blue Ridge.
Forty will meet on Monday, you do new tipping rates. Closure of the old cell is looking real good. To the nice, I guess some problems we have with the contractor, the original contract. Some questions.
Talking good drag. Thank you, Chuck. Main Street Lex Planning Commission.
Already approved and actually option from Max Mark Holmes, June Patterson for a sub. And that was approved unanimously and that will come and when worse preliminary some lot lines for. They did the core physical training for say, just want to make it one big parcel and against lay and that that'll come before. Plan schedule and at this point our draft of the comprehensive next Thursday and then a half. And we plan to have public meet online or not, if it is online or not, and we will either tape. So hopefully it'll get more people engaged. That's all I have to report.
You on the planning commission, Chuck.
Plan review process. I'm just trying to how long this go.
Yeah, it a couple of different planning commissioners, we should, well, we'll have prove anything by June, but at least we'll be to a point or modifications. And that can be done by staff or council.
Is the relation on, on review.
It every five years.
Five years, that's us will have two and a half years to to sit on it. I guess is.
You review it every five years and really we plan to changes to it, but this was a major, I should say.
There's on council and city finishing and approving it's time to start on the effort. Well pointed out, Chuck.
Yeah, the board won't meet again until updates. First, the tourism staff has been nineteen crisis. And faces through our website and social media beautiful scenic visuals designed to be inspired in fifty fifteen seconds campaign doors challenge. Which is a weekly contest reuse of the more popular trails in our area. Two of their respond in May. And it aims to increase in the entry into into the market site and social media platforms cooperating. As well as those that are the future and initiatives include the campaign which promotes local restaurants provided dream campaign. Which focuses on out the action to order the twenty twenty inspiration quite in yet, but we're getting there is inviting travelers to our area. The start couples getaways. I got a couple of local businesses during the COVID nineteen emergent Lexington, Main Street Lexington, look at. Almost finished here about Main Street Lexington's gift certificate since the visitor center closed on Marvel hotels to gauge business and can report the rate of between fifteen and thirty per news. Natural Bridge State Park may actually exceeded those for the same and even though the, you know, the main buildings close ticket booth at the bottom of the hill. Managed crowds, the park has instituted a seventy five, another local attraction that remains open for jokers. And they're now now looking to instant manage crowds. In fact, this past weekend, traffic has been in the interstate eighty one. So clearly, so that's, that's good news. So.
I can relate to that. We went to Saint Mary's where cars backed, you know, probably quarter mile road from, from the parking area. So we just turned, it is good to see people getting out in our area.
Experience and enjoy to be sure.
I have no report. We'll be meeting the.
Terrific. Thank you, Michelle.
Report.
Thank.
No report, but we'll be meeting on the nineteenth.
Think we all be meeting virtually.
Meeting.
You go. Now you can still learn new tricks, right?
Right.
I don't have anything from my report for anyone, everyone listening, and I hope thank you to the, the businesses in our community of commerce. The virtual success, if you didn't hit Shando Attic yesterday, tomorrow. But that was a positive circumstance for a. Was out on the street, saw Debbie making frequent deliveries to cars and people driving, doing things in a new way and different circumstance could have imagined. And I just applaud the and I won't name all the businesses, but everybody accommodating to their customers. And so a huge entire community, business and retail efforts to pivot and practice positive plans COVID nineteen time. City man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One is that we are anticipating and loosening of the restrictions that are in place right now and reopening. At the things that we need to do to try and assure the safety of us and also assure the safety of the public. We've recently placed screens, the commissioners of revenues office to try to do so in the registrar's office. Also, it's facilities where we have significant public we can do in those areas as well. Back on five days a week during the regular business hours during the days of the week and hours of the day. So we may also make some changes in the setup in our offices. Robbie Bailey is working on the supplies we will need and the types of thing that we might need to have for equipment and supply and for customers. The staff to see what concerns they have and then think we can provide for customers to assure them safe station where they can pick up a mask if they do not have one. The second thing that's important, I guess, sort of interest center, which we're a member of. We are all member of, we have very few people that sort of need that service. But that entity is time relief effort for the memberships brewed reserves would be given back to the members. To Rockingham County, Harrisonburg, Augusta County really will receive tens of thousands of dollars percentage of. Citizens, I think we would get back about four hundred sixty dollars. The effort though on those other on behalf of that's being considered. You probably knew COVID cases this last weekend Lexington, several employers in the community. But that's a recent turnaround. We'd had three very all recovered and there was no. Three employees of different employers with the COVID virus been diagnosed. Gifts, the Rockbridge Area Geneological Society fortunately, but they did gift the Miller's House meal that they had remaining after they dissolved. So look after another entity that cares for our community. The farmhouse is doing very well. Instead, they sell a lot of tomatoes, a lot of strawberries among other things. So that's another piece of good news that and a place for some of us to go out and look for some juice and agricultural items. And that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Did you have any questions for the city manager? Good. I would do as the. Went to the farm vibrant and they had a lot of good product out there, so encourage keep their six, six feet apart. Good stuff, lots of good looking plants and herbs to plant and feed the deer and rabbits. Do adoption of the fiscal year twenty one budget and capital.
I moved a postponed.
Motion and second and discussion. Hearing non roll.
I thought David gave a good sample that we have included in there in the, in the budget as ones to different agencies. And so please take me another two weeks to comment on the budget.
Absolutely. So we count, count on our get the word out to. Comments or questions.
And to that pool not opening is another I will, will be wondering about, point that out.
Absolutely. Unique times. And then pool in the summer is a unique solution. Or call for the question, Miss Hens, Mr. Ayers. Smith. Ziegler.
I.
Mr. Dyer.
I.
Motion carries unanimously forward that to the May twenty first city attorney.
Court of Virginia jurisdictions can begin opening up non emergency cases. So I'm not sure at this point I'm going to handle that process, hopefully on the, the next meeting on the twenty first. Obviously, we have the pretty pending, so we will attempt to get that can as things begin to to get. So that's all I have in terms of a report. The only other I suggest we reapprove, we adopted at our. Meeting to allow electronic. Right, read the title so we don't have to read it twice. It would be a modesty ordinance to effectuate temporary changes and procedures to address continuity of.
Thumbs up.
I.
Water tower. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
For Jim, I guess as far as better seems to be follows or we will follow the direction of the governor.
Look at anything the governor's office has precautions, but we'll look at other sources on what seems to be more appropriate for the city of regard, anything out there as far as precautions.
Any discussions about the par equipment and when that.
Us that, but it has been item that we know we have to deal with. And I mentioned the swimming pool, how do you stop pushing and shoving? They're probably weren't people try to ask them to take as, as young people. And maybe might be the best we can do. It makes any sense at all to try and sir two or three months.
Yeah.
And then in Jim's work, the best practices for when we get to the other, so the emergency management. We, we could extend longer than we choose to. So all these by the senior management team looking at grass. When Jim and I were is how the been out earlier somewhat in January, very went on vacation and when he came back. And just as it was being delivered is when all the world changed and obviously our, and I know all of council field. And your ability as staff to get what we feel is a reasonable and lots of things we'd like to do. But we're concerning for that has been no easy feat and looking at the budget process. One of the things I feel that financial ruin happens, most going bankrupt and things can happen. But one to close from Robert Kennedy. Out for the health of our children, equality of joy of their play. It does not be for the strength of our marriages, intel or the integrity of our public officials in their courage. Neither our wisdom, compassion, nor our devotion to our country in short, except that which makes life worthwhile. Leave you with that to ponder and you go home and please give your fellow tonight to get home safely. But thank you to serve our community and for all the good work that you do. And there's nothing else to come before us. We will stand.
You, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel.